Thank you councillors, directors, members of the gallery and people watching on the live stream to this scheduled meeting of Swan Hill Rural City Council. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respect to their elders past and present. councillor Young, the prayer please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We beseech you, Lord, that we may convey wisdom, understanding and sincerity in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Apologies and, ah, just sorry for do that. Ah, yeah, apologies and leave of absence. So we have apology from councillor McKay and leave of absence from councillor Mcfee. Could I have a mover?
I'll move.
Councillor Jeffrey, second to councillor Moore, all those in favour? Carried, thank you. Directors and officers present, we have all of our executive leadership team here today, Scott Barber, CEO, Bruce Myers, Director of Community and Cultural Services, Michelle Granger, Director of Development and Planning, Barn Pratap, Director of Corporate Services, and Leah Johnson, Director of Infrastructure. Welcome everybody. Confirmation of minutes from the previous meeting, I'll take those as read and ask if somebody would like to move, could move, somebody that was there could move those minutes, move councillor Kelly, second to councillor Young, all those in favour? Carried. We have no joint letters or, ah, sorry, declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest today councillors with any of the agenda items? No, thank you. Joint letters and reading of petitions, we have none today, Mr CEO, thank you. Public question time, Mr CEO, I believe we have one question?
We did.
Do you want to suspend standing orders? No, motion to suspend standing orders, please. Councillor Jeffrey, councillor Moore, those in favour? Carried, thank you. Mr CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have a question from Chris Stacey. Good afternoon councillors, can you please advise the status of the residential, rural residential strategy being undertaken by Swan Hill Rural City Council? It's my understanding that the strategy was to be completed by Christmas 2023 and presented to a council meeting in the first three months of the year. If it is not completed, please advise what the hold up is and when it will be completed. Thank you, Mr Stacey, for the question. Council has received a draft strategy and an interim review by officers has been completed. The consultants are carrying out some additional work that is expected to be completed within this month. So that, that's explained the extension in time. Council is currently considering the process for future consultation after we go through the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Can I have a motion to resume standing orders? Move councillor Moore, second to councillor Jeffrey, those in favour? Carried, thank you. Open forum, we have nothing today. So we will move on to section two of the agenda. Officer reports for decision. Item 2.1, Ken Harrison Reserve Advisory Committee, Ms Granger.
Thank you, Mayor. Last month at the March Ordinary Council meeting, you resolved to establish the Ken Harrison Advisory Committee to help master plan for the Recreation Reserve and third nominating a councillor to lead that committee. Today we're asking you to nominate a councillor to be chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Granger. Any questions on that? If not, could I have a motion? Councillor Moore?
Microphone please councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you. But councillor appoint a councillor, I'm sorry councillor Jeffrey to be chair and that councillor Kelly be sub-delegate for that position, for the position of Ken Harrison Recreation Reserve Committee.
Thank you. Have a second for that motion. Councillor Young, thank you. You wish to speak to that councillor Moore?
We've discussed it a number of times, yeah.
Thank you. Nothing further to add? Any other discussion councillors? If not, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. 2.2.
Microphone councillor.
Essex delegations. Mr CEO, this is your report.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Routinely councillor reviews the delegations. We use a system called Reliance System which is owned and run by Maddox, the legal people, and they provide updates through that system to ensure that current legislation and, and powers under that legislation are captured within our delegation's documents. Attached is a document with, I think it's two or three updates. This can only be enacted upon approval by the councillor group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions councillors on this report? If not, can I have a motion? Councillor Kelly, move as per recommendation, seconded councillor Moore, thank you. Councillor Kelly, you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just that this is in line with good governance and procedure and will enable good operational workings for council. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moore, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, pretty much same procedure reflects changes in legislation that of course brought to control and the L M I was executive to carry out their functions as working council.
Thank you. Any other speakers for or against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour, motion is carried. Thank you. Item 2.3, asset protection policy, Ms Johnston.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. This is a procedural report to review the policy that is currently named control of damage to council infrastructure at building site policy to asset protection policy. And this is really just to be more consistent with naming conventions that are more commonly used in local government. It applies to all building and development work carried out that may have an impact on council's physical infrastructure. The main changes to the policy include relevant legislation has been added to the policy, that the public liability insurance has been increased from 10 million through to 20 million, reporting from planning and building department has been amended from a weekly requirement to a monthly requirement, time for assets to inspect amended from seven days to soon as practically possible after receiving notice of the issue of a certificate of occupancy, and a table that just outlines the types of issues that may be identified for rectification has been included for information as well. This has been discussed already at previous assemblies. So the recommendation is as written that council adopt the asset protection policy, poll slash infra 509 and procedure as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions councillors? If not, can I have a motion?
I'll move as per the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, seconded councillor Kelly, wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Jeffrey?
Just briefly, it's I've seen the rename of the policy, it's a more obvious what council undertakes with private developers as well.
Microphone councillor.
Thank you. All those going to forget. Just acknowledge the renaming of the, the policy to asset protection. It's a bit more community friendly and targeted to what it undertakes. And yes, just a review of the policy around developing in council and by private developers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Kelly?
No thanks.
No, thank you. Okay. Any further speakers for or against? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried. Item 2.4, asset naming, Heirloom Way, Ms Johnston.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. This report is to seek council approval to name one of the roads in the, in the Heirloom Estate subdivision. The asset naming guidelines, which were approved in December 2023, were created to simplify and streamline asset naming procedures for developers and the community. The guidelines introduce pre-approved themes that could be used by developers to reduce requirements of public consultation and council approvals when naming roads within a development. Private developments do not need council approval or public consultation for noncommemorative street names that follow the following themes: local and native flora and fauna, historic paddle steamers of the Murray, forgotten trades of the Murray Mallie, local historic events, anzac battles, local agriculture and horticultural products. The following names have been selected by the developer to reflect the horticultural history of the site specifically to the cultivation of tomatoes, that is Heirloom Way and Roma Drive. Both of these road names are compliant with the pre-approved themes, however Heirloom Way is a three-road and does require council approval to proceed. It is also noted that there is a risk that geographic names Victoria may reject Heirloom Way, however the developer has advised that they would still like to proceed as Heirloom is a type of tomato grown on the property by the previous owners. In relation to noncommemorative road naming on the development, there is no requirement under the naming rules for public consultation. However, council has made a commitment in our, in our policy to consult concerned or affected parties. The adjoining landowner subsequently has been contacted and has also shown support for the naming of Heirloom Way. Therefore, the recommendation to council is that council approves the name Heirloom Way.
Thank you. Any questions councillors? Councillor Kelly?
Um, yes. Thank you to the director for this report. Could we see a map of the streets in relation to the surrounding streets? There's a map in the report from Price Merit of the internal measurements etcetera of the streets, but there's no wider map. So could we see a map where, because what I'm interested in is where, where all street, where Waddy Street meets with Heirloom Way and whether it's a direct alignment. And if so, um, I wanted to ask, is there an argument that the street is a continuation of Waddy Street and should be, should be just called Waddy Street? So two things, could, could we see a map? And, and the other point about Waddy Street?
Through you, Mayor. Obviously, I can't provide additional maps in this forum, but I'm certainly happy to provide that at a later date. I don't necessarily think that affects the decision-making in terms of the naming of Heirloom Way today. In regards to where it meets with other streets, if it's at a roundabout or more significant intersections, it's quite common for, for roads to change names or it can be retained that name. So obviously this has just been a recommendation from the developer to be considered by council. It has been considered by officers as well, and it does seem like a reasonable request for council to decide.
Do you know of any examples in Swan Hill where name, roads change their name? I don't, I can't think of any.
Yep, so you've done a quick spot.
Thank you councillor. The example off the top of my head is Coronation into Everingham. I think that's a change at a roundabout, if that helps.
Yeah, you are right, yeah. Confusing too. I think it causes confusion. Anyway, um, that's my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Jeffrey?
Just one, if, if ready approved, Heirloom Way and geographic names Victoria that rejects it is better to be an applicant of that before I, I'm not, right?
Through you, Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Could, could someone put up a map? Like, could we use Google and put up a map?
I think the.
It just is bugging me.
For your own benefit, the Heirloom Way is in direct alignment with Waddy Street.
It is.
And that, that, that map was shown during a councillor assembly, that when, where this, this topic was discussed. So it is in direct alignment with Waddy Street and a roundabout is proposed on Coronation Avenue at the entry to, to the estate and obviously with Waddy Street in the opposite, in the other, other direction.
Oh, sorry. And then when it joins, will it eventually join with Yana Street?
Do you want to answer that or do we start? But subject to future development applications, it may continue through to, to Yana Street, but at this point in time, there's no development proposals that, that allow for that at the moment.
So it'll be a dead-end street. Heirloom Way will be a dead-end street.
At this, at this point in time, yes.
Yep. Um, and the re, sorry, another question. The reason we're not, um, the recommendation is that we approve Roma Street is because we don't need to, is that why?
Yeah, through you, Mayor, we don't need to do that. It's really, that, that component is just for information.
Um, and we don't need to because it complies with our policy?
That's correct.
But you're concerned this one doesn't and you're wanting it? Yep.
Oh, I haven't a very good, I just.
Move councillor Jeffrey, seconded councillor Moore. Councillor Jeffrey, you wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you.
Microphone councillor, please.
Okay. Yeah, I look, I support it is Heirloom Way given the, the history of the tomato, they've got that history around. Why I don't want to name it Heirloom Way, so I'm happy to put it forward for the developers' recommendation and put it to geographic names and hopefully get an approval, which seems to be substantiated in my opinion. So let, let's put it, put it forward and say what they say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Moore?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yes, I look forward to this development and getting the names, getting all the roads named through there, sort of speeds of development because then titles can be issued and addressed with addresses. So that's why it's important that we actually get this underway as soon as we can. And that, historically, yes, I rode my bike past there on the way to school and remember the tomatoes in those paddocks that the former owners used to, used to grow there many a year. I went to the technical school, which is, that block is on the way. So, yes, it brings back a lot of memories for me to be, for that to be called Heirloom Way and I think a very fitting name for that, for that particular property. And I hope the powers that be are okay as well. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers for or against? Councillor Young?
Yes, I just wanted to.
Microphone councillor.
Microphone, please.
Just wanted to endorse what councillor Moore has said. I also live down in that area and I can remember going to that property to buy tomatoes when we were, many years ago, because a local Italian family had vegetables growing on there. And there were varieties called Heirloom tomatoes. So I think it's very fitting.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor Kelly?
I'll speak against because I do think that it should be called Waddy Street. It is going to be an extension of Waddy Street. And I think if we keep, if we change names of streets too often, it's very confusing for people trying to find places and hosties, et cetera. Um, delivery people, uh, I mean, so I think that, I also think that there is a possibility it won't get accepted. Uh, so yeah, we will see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Councillor Jeffrey, you have the right of reply.
I'll, I'll, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll put the motion to the vote that council approves the name Heirloom Way. Those in favour? Those against? Motion is carried. Item 2.5, councillors, um, Mr CEO?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We've had a request from councillor Mcfee to extend his leave of absence to the 30th of April 2024. Due process as it comes through council for, for approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr CEO. Councillor Mcfee's leave is currently through till the 12th, I believe. And so this just extends it further to, to the end, end of April. Councillor, do you wish to move councillor Kelly?
I'll move.
Move that, thank you. Seconded councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Kelly, you wish to, wish to speak? No. Councillor Jeffrey? No. Put the motion, all those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to section three, 3.1, councillor assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items. Mr CEO?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Taken as read, it's procedural unless there are any specific questions.
Any questions or comments, councillors on any of those? If not, can I have a motion? Move councillor Jeffrey, seconded councillor, councillor Young, wish to speak? No. Put the motion, all those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on, have no notices of motion, any foreshadowed items, councillors? Any urgent items not included in the agenda? We'll move on to section seven to consider an order on councillor reports. Has been, recognising obviously it's only been, I think, three weeks since our, since our last meeting. So I'll throw the floor open and I'll start with councillor Jeffrey.
I've ran out of doubt, nothing really too exciting to avoid. Thank you.
You've had a fair bit going on in your, in your, in your life with, with a new baby, councillor Jeffrey.
New babies, countless nights, you know, that's fun stuff.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, as I said, it's only been a short time and with the Easter break in between, hasn't been a lot happening. One thing I did get to in late March was the One Basin CRC meeting, or get together in Mildura. It was basically a get-together of stakeholders. We had a presentation from a person in the irrigation industry who put up a slide that showed that if 200 gigs of the water buyback comes out of the Murray, it will actually be in deficit. There just won't be enough water to go around in an average year. So it's quite, it's very, very concerned and we should be too. That doesn't bode well for the future. Does come out of the Murray system. That's all. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Councillor Young?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councillor Kelly?
Yes, I have a small report that I thought Sharon might put up for me. Um, couple of items there. On Saturday just gone, oh, Sunday just gone, the 7th, I went to Writing for the Disabled in Swan, out at Tindinda, which I hadn't been there before. It was great to see that incredible venue and the infrastructure there, the sensory garden and the arena. So I went there because I was invited to join with Writing for the Disabled Association to welcome in Dean McGowan, who had been on a, almost a triathlon to raise money for RDA Swan Hill. So the McGowan family raised money through completing a physical challenge which included 14, 1.4 kilometre river swim over in Barham, because they're a family from Barham, followed by a 19 kilometre run to Marribet, then a ride from Marribet to the RDA Centre. And so we welcomed the ride as in and then had a barbecue and some speeches and things like that. So the fundraiser is, you can probably Google it and find it. I think it was up to $18,000 when I looked at it last night. So wonderful gesture by the McGowan family, whose daughter Jordan has been to RDA Swan Hill since she was about six years old and she's now 18. So the family was so grateful for RDA that they, they did this fundraiser. And Dean, what an incredible fellow he is. And it's great to meet him and the family and see RDA. So see what the council, uh, RF Butler, uh, Reserve?
E, EF.
EF Butler Reserve, excuse me. A great asset for the town. And the other items I did were, went to coffee with a councillor with the mayor on the 20th of March, 20th, 21st of March, I met with some CWA Community Issues Committee to discuss health. On the 23rd, did some strategic planning with Sustainable Living the Mallie. Went to the final of the, one of the tennis competitions, I'm, I'm going to forget what it was called, the women's final I, I watched at down at the Swan Hill Tennis and Cricket Court. But I'm forgetting the name of it. That was, that was great. And then just went to the, I've been put on the audit and risk committee. So that was on the 4th of April. That was my short month because we've met early.
Thank you councillor Kelly. And for me, Sharon's got it there. Also, coffee. Also coffee with a, coffee with a councillor. Couple of meetings in Melbourne with Tennis Australia just regarding strategic planning of the facility in, in Swan Hill, which as councillor Kelly has pointed out is world class and it's used for pro tournaments and just how that will tie in with, with the Ken Harrison master planning as well. And at the same time, or in the same visit meeting with the Minister for Transport regarding pedestrian crossing over the railway line from the CBD to the rear front. So, which is a pretty important piece of work that, that this council's been advocating for, for a long period of time. And just a couple of extra things in there. Regular meeting with, with Swan Hill District Health just to catch up on relevant issues that the council can support them with. And the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement Annual General Meeting. And I thank the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement for their ongoing voluntary work down at the Pioneer Settlement because without them, the, the place would definitely be quite lost without the countless hours that are, that are put in. So thank you for them, for their, their dedication, their commitment. And like a lot of community organisations, they could certainly do with some, some more members to, to support down there. And that's it from me. So being no further items of business, Mr CEO, I will now close the meeting at 2:25pm.